Good evening, I would like to call the August 22nd, 2022 New Albany Plain Local Board of Education meeting in order. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Mr. Bush is absent, Mr. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. McClelland.
Here.
Vice President Newmoff.
Here.
President Kalamowski. Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. members have had the opportunity to review the minutes from our July 18th, 2022 board meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve those meeting minutes?
So moved. Thank you.
Mr. Newmoff and Mr. Darrow, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Vice President Newmoff.
Yes.
Mr. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. McClelland.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries. Superintendent Sawyers, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
No, thank you.
With none may I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. McClelland and Mr. Newmoff, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Mr. McClelland.
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff.
Yes.
Mr. Darrow.
Yes.
President Kalamowski. Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is an opportunity for public participation, and we have several participants this evening. Before we get started, I would just like to remind everyone, since we have a large group this evening, about the rules related to public participation. So each participant has five minutes to speak on a topic. Treasurer Jenkins will keep the time and she'll give you a little warning when you're getting close to your five minutes. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the board. And as a reminder, the board does not engage in public participation. However, if you would like to engage with us, we are happy to engage individually. If you want to email us, call us, our cell phones are on the board's website. We're happy to engage that way. So with that, we can get started. Our first participant this evening is Amy Callner. So as a reminder, just state your name and address.
Okay, yep. Good evening, my name is Amy Callner, my address is 6235 East Walnut Street. I've been a resident of this community for over 15 years and a proud mother of four involved need graduates, two of which identify as gay. And I am extremely saddened by the recent communication that came from the school board saying teachers will not be able to use students' chosen pronouns or names without parental consent. Why? What is the purpose for not calling someone by the pronoun or name they choose? Everyone has pronouns. Some pronouns meet the societal expectations and gender norms. Some pronouns do not. This is why it's important to respect someone's pronouns. Pronouns do matter. Using affirming pronouns saves lives. And studies and statistics show that. The Trevor Project did a national survey in 2022 of LGBTQ youth mental health. They surveyed over 34,000 youth aged 13 to 24 across the United States. For those of you who are not familiar with the Trevor Project, it's an American nonprofit organization founded in 1998. It focuses on suicide prevention efforts among lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning youth. Results from this 2022 survey are staggering. Forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. Fewer than one in three transgender and non-binary youth found their home to be gender-affirming. LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming reported lower rates of suicide attempting. LGBTQ youth are not inherently prone to suicide because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society. And as a mother of two gay children, I have lived this firsthand, and it's heartbreaking and agonizing. So why this change in policy and one that really doesn't fully support the LGBTQ students in the community? Which is also in direct conflict with what the ACLU of Ohio says. The ACLU of Ohio is committed to equipping young adults with critical information to help protect themselves and their rights in academic settings. They released a very new resource, 2022 Students' Rights in Ohio, you can find it on the internet. It's a comprehensive first-of-its-kind handbook, which will serve as an important resource to educate and empower all Ohio students and explores a broad range of topics and protections. As a snapshot, in terms of equal treatment, the US Constitution protects the right for all students to receive equal treatment at school. Students have the right to express their sexuality and gender identity at school. Schools are not permitted to reveal a student's LGBTQ identity without their consent. On page four of that document, write to LGBTQ students, the basics, you have a right to express your sexuality and gender at school. If your school allows non-academic student organizations, they must allow you to form a GSA. Students cannot enforce sex-based dress codes, I'm sorry, schools. Your school cannot tell anyone about your LGBTQ status without your consent. And perhaps most important, your school cannot tell your parents or teachers that you are gay or transgender. Your sexual orientation and how you identify are confidential information, and they shouldn't out you to other students, parents, or anyone else without your consent. I did a little more research. And in the central Ohio area, there's schools that are not enforcing this "don't ask for pronouns" rule that just was announced within New Albany. Schools not enforcing this, there are schools like Columbus City, Upper Arlington, Worthington, Dublin, Licking Heights, just to name a few.
Yep, one minute remaining.
No other district that I'm aware of that is requiring this parental permission. So why is New Albany adopting this policy? Please think about these LGBTQ students. These students are vulnerable, and they need all the love, support, and respect we can give them. And sometimes school community is the only place they feel safe or where they can be themselves.
Nicholas Alsba.
Hello, I am Nicholas Alsba, I live at 7709 Roxton Court. I'm speaking today on New Albany High School's new actions regarding Board Policy 2416. I am the head of the High School Sexuality and Gender Alliance Club. And we have tremendous concern regarding the handling of the policy. It is now a procedure that in order to go by another name and a set of pronouns that differ from your birth gender, you must tell your teacher and they must tell your parents to gain consent. I understand the desire to keep parents in the loop about their children's wants and desires, but this inadvertently puts many students in danger. I trust that you want the best for your students and would never intentionally put them in harm's way. So I urge you to reconsider the requirement to get parents' consent. Many transgender students have to hide their desire to use different names and pronouns from their guardians, because the guardians are not accepting. School is the only place where they can feel a reprieve from the oppressive environment of their homes and the only place they can use their correct name and pronouns. With the current procedure, they must either lose this safe haven or face the consequences of being outed to their parents. Many adults who are not accepting believe transness to be a horrible thing, an attack on their values. That is, of course, not the case, but it causes them to act in dangerous ways. Many minors are abused, thrown out of their homes, or even killed by their parents because they seek to be trans. Keeping this policy as is means that this will inevitably happen eventually. I understand that in this policy, the student must consent to the call home, but it only takes one act of negligence for an accidental outing to result in violence towards the student. Two schools have used the exact same policies you do, but they do not require a call home. The student must simply tell the faculty instead of being asked, "Oh, we're tangy in Westerville." This is league safer than the interpretation of the policy at hand. Policy 2416 never even mentions gender. The closest thing to gender is sexual behavior and attitudes. And to insinuate that a gender is inherently sexual is plainly wrong. It's not. And it's just dangerous to... People are going to get hurt because of this if it's not changed, and nobody wants that. And so I really hope that you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Lowery. Lowery.
I have two hats on tonight. Good evening, I'm here, first, I'd like to say, I totally agree with you all, great job. Good job, students. I'd like to address Jacqueline Lowery, 5254 Lowell Way. I've been a teacher at Albany High School for 19 years. I would like to direct the board's attention to Board Policy 3233, which is Political Activities of Staff. There is literally one word that I really, as an English teacher, beg you to reconsider. That is in item F, which reads as written, "No professional staff member shall encourage or solicit students to engage in political activities or political causes." Now, as educators, a huge part of our job is to encourage students to become active citizens. I know that in the big picture of this policy, I think that your intent is not to tell us, "Don't encourage kids to participate in the political process." I don't think that was your intent at all, but the way this sentence is constructed, an administrator in the future could pull this out and say to a teacher, you know, "Billy came to you and said they were excited about going to the fill-in-the-blank rally, and you said, 'Great job, go out there and participate.'" You encouraged the student in a political activity, you broke in board policy. I think by just deleting that word and leaving it as, "No professional staff member shall solicit students to engage in political activities or political causes," you get at the heart of what I'm really hoping is your intent here. Which is that, you're right, we should not solicit students. I shouldn't go into the classroom and say, "Hey, you need to go to fill-in-the-blank rally on Saturday." You know, that is not our job as educators, as this policy makes clear. But encouraging kids to participate in political causes that they're excited about, that's literally a huge factor of what we do as teachers. So I encourage you to delete the word "encourage." You're welcome.
Lee Brechter.
Hello.
Can you state your name and give us your draft as well?
Yes, thank you. My name is Lee Brechter, I live at 7709 Roxton Court. I'm a ninth grader at New Albany High School. Thank you for letting me speak at today's meeting. I'm here to address student concerns about the new policy regarding the protection of people's rights amendment and how it is affecting us. I would first like to just say, I've done extensive research over the past couple of days. There hasn't been a lot of time between when this update to the policy or extension of it was emailed to students and this board meeting, but I have done the best that I could. I have read the Columbus Dispatch newspaper article, I've looked at multiple board policies, I've watched the previous board meeting. I've looked at the protection of people's rights amendment on edu.gov. So I have prepared for this. There is a bit of a discrepancy in my eyes between Policy 2416 and the email that was sent out on August 12th in the bi-weekly update. In Policy 2416, there is no mention of gender identity and/or pronouns. Rather, this small bullet point about sexual attitudes, sexual behavior and sexual attitude, which has no correlation. I don't believe that there was a lot of time in between that email being sent out and this meeting to be able to properly process everything. But there... However, the people who are angry about this will speak out against it. So even though there wasn't a lot of time, we scrambled to try to pull together resources and try to find our footing at what to say at this meeting. I was left wondering after reading the email and the policy, what's the real policy? Because in the email, it says something different than the policy, and it cites that direct policy as an extension of that, as something that it's being, that the pronouns are being based off of. And again, the sexual behavior and attitudes and pronouns have no correlation. And as previous speakers have said, this is dangerous, very dangerous to students. And I myself am out to both of my parents, and it's safe at home for me, but I know people who it's not safe at home for. And I know people who I have been texting and asking if their parents read their texts, and I said, "Okay, well, I'll try to get this information to you as quickly as possible." Because I don't know if they ever see the email, I don't know if they're aware of it, and I'm not sure if they're going to be safe. And if they will be telling their teachers, "Oh, I go by this name and these pronouns," and they will end up accidentally outing themselves to their teachers and then being put in a dangerous space mentally because their teacher is unable to use those pronouns, or the teacher has to call home.
You have one minute, Amy.
Thank you. Other districts are not doing this. I know you can interpret this policy how you want, but other districts are going about a much safer way of this. They are saying, "I cannot ask you your pronouns, but you can tell me your pronouns." I feel like that is a much safer way of going about this. And to wrap up, I feel like there needs to be some heavy reconsideration about this new extension to the policy and how it will affect students and how it is affecting staff and how it will affect LGBT children in your school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jupiter Talbot.
Hello there, I am Jupiter Talbot, I live at 7510 Georgetown. First off, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to speak today. I have spoken here before, and it is always a pleasure. In my previous speech to the board, I was referring to a statement made by another community member. Unfortunately, today, I must refer to a statement made by the board itself, as my contemporaries have demonstrated. Currently, the leading cause, the third leading cause of child death in the United States is suicide. This fact terrifies me as someone who has been through issues of mental health and suicidal ideation. And I can tell you, although I do not believe that my mother is currently present, that it terrifies and rocks a family in a way that I simply cannot demonstrate within five minutes. It can upturn lives. It can bring things into the lights, and it can bury things deep inside within children that they should never have to go through. Now, this policy does not seek to make children kill themselves, obviously. It does not seek to cause negative mental health among children. Instead, from my view, it simply seeks to, in some misguided sense, protect the privacy of children. This is a noble cause. However, I think that this board has, in many ways, misinterpreted and misused this noble cause in a way that would, I assume not to your knowledge, cause great harm to our transgender students. This sort of policy is not the way to go about interpreting legislation such as 2416, which seeks nobility and in accordance with our Fourth Amendment rights as American citizens, in accordance with our freedom and right to privacy. This policy seeks to, the Policy 2416 seeks to stop intrusive surveys into the lives of students from teachers. This is proper. One section in this policy refers to sexual behaviors and activities. I assume that this is what the board has based their recent decision off of. I believe... I can start over. This is, and I can start that sentence over. This is an academic board, this is a Board of Education. Thusly, I would expect all of you to understand and recognize the difference between sex and gender as it has been recognized by almost every college or honorable institution in the country. It is a well-established fact that philosophers decided on, philosophers and biologists decided on long, long ago.
Yep, one minute remaining.
Thank you. And this board seems to have forgotten about it. Although this policy is, in my opinion, coming from a place of wanting to protect students, it will, as my contemporaries have demonstrated, in fact, hurt them by aggressively encouraging and forcing them to come out to their parents who may not be supportive. I am lucky enough to have supportive family, but I know many friends, many individuals who have texted me and said that they feel unsafe in their homes if they are to come out. This is a very common thing, as unfortunately, in Ohio, there is hate and there is... And there is misguided, and there are misguided feelings about transgender individuals that this board should seek in accordance with the mission statements of New Albany schools to stamp out to make, to help encourage our students. And I feel that this policy does not make our school safe, does not fully adhere with scientific fact, and does not fit with the beliefs and policies, the stated beliefs and policies of the New Albany Board of Education and of New Albany schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mimi Rumi.
Hello, my name is Mimi Rumi, and I live on 3530 Air Health Pass. I was raised by two very proud Christians, and they have taught me nothing but that God is love and that God is accepting. I am here on behalf of my morals and on behalf of those who cannot speak here tonight to preach their protection. According to US statistics, the US federal crime-based statistics, socioeconomic status does in fact have a large effect on domestic abuse. And while it is more popular in poorer homes, it has shown that it is mostly underreported in well-influenced homes. And as we all know, New Albany is a mostly highly affluent community. My pronouns are she-be, and I feel that it is in fact a bit redundant that me admitting that I would like to be, I would not mind being called by a pronoun that is gender-neutral would be redundant, that you guys as staff members now have to, are legally required, legally required to call my parents. As I just said, I am a Christian, and I was raised by Christians. In the same policy that you guys are referencing, we are talking mainly about Amendment Four, which is the amendment of the right to privacy. And this goes for, as our student... As it is stated, as you guys have stated, the policy has stated that you would, in fact, if we were applying the same rules we were applying to pronouns and names, you would now have to call my parents and tell them that I am a Christian. And as far as I'm concerned, that is not as it is. This is more of a right to privacy, and as I looked into, in the email, it said it was due to a federal law case. I could not find any SCOTUS cases like having to do with it. And I also looked into the, into further legislation and could not find a single law or executive order having to do with this particular thing. As far as I'm concerned, I could only find a Tennessee court case, which is only based on a state level, and a school policy from 1997 that has not been reviewed since 2007. I know many of your kids. Ms. McClelland is a great classmate of mine, and I grew up with the Newmoffs. Mr. Sawyers knows my father's darkest secret. And we are a very close and tight knit community. But that does not mean we will always see what is going on underneath the circles. Mr. Newmoff is a good friend of mine, not a good friend of mine, a friend of my parents. And I am almost and completely sure that during the time of my suicide attempts, there were four of them, that he did not know. We do not know what's going on in the personal lives of our community. As much as we would like to believe that these people we know and love are not suffering, they could be. As I stated in the beginning, highly affluent areas are the most likely to have underreported as women and children feel they feel that they are better off with in the area that they are rather than reporting it. I have, last year alone, I have spent over 400 hours volunteering with the middle school theater department. I got to know many kids, and as the youngest assistant director, I was who many came to. I was who most people came to, to try out new pronouns just to feel safe.
Yep.
And I'm thinking this thing, but most of them just want to try it out, just to have a sort of experimental. They wanted to know what suited them. And I feel like as clothing changes and as hair changes, and as we, as teenagers develop, it is more, as we as teenagers develop, it is more frequent for us to question sexuality and gender. And we should be able to do so without fear that we would ever be found out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reale Bots.
Reale Bots, 739 Bean Farm Road. I'm with the board, Superintendent Sawyers. I'm a practicing infectious disease physician in the central Ohio region. I've been privileged to take care of people from various walks of life, including many from diverse sexual minorities. As such, I've been alarmed by the movement championed by politically motivated groups, really, the trivialized issue of gender dysphoria. They view it as the next great cultural phenomenon. They view it as the next great cultural phenomenon. Though they state their motivation is to protect this group of highly vulnerable members of our society, their actions to actively implicate young people into their pseudo-scientific positions proves otherwise. Minors who suffer from gender dysphoria overwhelmingly desist and come to accept who they are by adulthood. A conservative estimate from the literature is about eighty-five percent. This is unless they're led down a path of affirmation. In addition, they suffer from much higher rates of mental illness, including anxiety, depression, behavioral disorders, suicidal tendencies. No doubt there are those who will state that stigma in society is to blame for these poor predictors of outcome. However, reality contradicts this. One of the prized examples is the Netherlands. Over a fifty-year period of acceptance, there's been little difference made in the rates of suicide among the gender dysphoria. In addition, those who suffer from gender dysphoria also experienced much higher rates of family conflict, parental mental illness, and bullying as children. The human brain is a remarkable organ, one that's not fully developed until a person is an adult. As an example, the frontal lobe, which deals with judgment and inhibition matures by the age of twenty-three to twenty-five. It is with this in mind that I want to state clearly that those who steer young people towards the use of puberty-blocking drugs inflict great harm on our adolescent community. We know that these drugs arrest genitalia in an underdeveloped stage, compromise bone density, lead to sexual dysfunction, lead to the risk of infertility. Contrary to what others may report, the effects of these agents are not universally universal. One does not even need to speak of sex reassignment surgery, which is purely cosmetic, and can lead to permanent sterility. There is now a growing population of people termed detransitioners. They went down a road that they thought would fulfill them and found it to be a dead end. Our children are precious and should not be used for social or medical experimentation. I urge both, of both sides of the political divide to recognize this. It is with these items in mind that I want to thank you all for recognizing, number one, that parents have the primary authority for nurturing their children. Number two, it is not appropriate for staff to meddle in the personal lives of their children. And number three, it's better for clinicians and therapists to help a person work through their issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Trisha Bot?
Trisha Bot seventy-three-nine Bean Farm Road, Better Half. President Kalanowski, Vice President UMO, four members, and Superintendent Sawyer, making the opportunity to share. I appreciate the great progress being made in regards to sharing curriculum plans with families and students. A deficit I see in some of the updated policy is that curriculum is not defined. Does that mean that all instruction is curriculum? Because that's what I, as a layperson, who is not a professional educator, would understand. And so where does NEST fall? In its current state, it seems to be curriculum. It has deans overseeing it, deans who choose what instruction is given. Yet I just attended open house with my ninth grader. That wasn't shown on the bell schedule we walked through. I can't find NEST on the curriculum mapping to see what videos and presentations might be given. I have suggestions to help bridge the gaps. One is return NEST to its former state of house, where students were given downtime without formal instruction to bond with and build trust with the teacher there and their fellow classmates. Or if cultural and health and other instruction must be shoved into NEST, it should be treated like other curriculum, planned ahead of time, presented online to facilitate transparency and engagement.
Erin Marshall.
Hello, my name is Erin Marshall. I live at fifty-three eighty Snyderbrook, and I'm currently a senior at New Albany High School. Now I'd like to briefly comment on the recent additions of the student parent privacy policy that allegedly aligned with our policy two, four, one. As a student who is in the LGBTQI plus community, I would like to once again bring to attention the dangers requiring parental consent for teachers to respect the gender identity of their students. I do not believe the board intended to harm their students, however, the implication of this policy does exactly this. Despite how much we all want parents to unconditionally love their children, it's not always the case. I urge both the boards to reconsider the policy changes. And in the future, when our safety and security proceedings are under debate or review, consult our community's many queer resources to ensure the safety of all students, no matter their sexual alignment and no matter their gender alignment. Thank you.
Thank you. Might have to help me with your last name, Avery. Thank you.
My name is Avery Tosteven. I live at seven, four, five, five Farming too Close. I'm in eleventh grade and I've been attending New Albany for my entire school career. Today I wanted to discuss the recent ruling of student privacy in regards to parent rights to know about students' preferred names and pronouns. My pronouns are they, them. If it's anybody's concern, both of my parents are aware. They've been aware for about a year and are both completely comfortable with it. I am lucky in that regards. I have friends who, upon hearing this news that they can no longer be perceived correctly at school because their parents don't support them, were heartbroken. They have lost a safe space. That breaks me. As stated in an email titled Student Privacy Update two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-three, sent on August twelfth, quote, "All NAPL's employees, including teachers, have been directed not to ask students verbally or in writing, including surveys, to share personally identifiable, identifiable information outlined herein, including their preferred pronouns." With these regulations, it is also stated, quote, "Our staff will work with each student to seek parent slash guardian permission prior to honoring the student's request." So let me ask you this. Where do you leave this with trans youth who do not have support at home? Trans youth who only when at school hear their correct name and pronouns. I feel I need to remind that stated by the Trevor Project in an article titled Data on Transgender Youth, quote, "Transgender youth reported significantly increased rates of depression, suicidality, and victimization compared to their cisgender peers." Transgender youth deserve respect undetermined by their parents' views. Transgender youth deserve to feel safe, cared for, and loved in schools. I deserve to feel safe, loved, and cared for in this school. But today, standing here, I am asking you to respect me aside from my parents' beliefs. That does not make me feel safe or cared for or loved or respected. I am sixteen and I am begging not to have to out my friends, for my friends not to have to out themselves to particularly dangerous situations just to be respected. I also feel the need to say that there is nothing shameful in my transness. My transness is beautiful. My transness is divine. I love being trans. I love being in a community wherein there are people from every single walk of life with every single experience. I don't feel that is represented when I need to ask directly that I be respected and that my beautiful friends be respected. And they cannot be because their parents aren't supportive. I am myself willingly. I don't need my parents to tell me that I'm allowed to be. I don't deserve to be put in danger because I want to be respected. I shouldn't need to grovel and beg for decency. But I'm here today. And I am begging you, please listen. I don't believe that this policy was interpreted with the intent to harm trans youth.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. But within the way that the policy was, was perceived by NAPL's staff, by NAPL's superintendents, and by NAPL's school board, we are no longer safe. I think that's heartbreaking. Please listen to me and my peers and my formers when saying we need this space to be protected and we need this space be caring. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other participants this evening? Next on the agenda are communications to the board, beginning with Superintendent Sawyer.
Members of the Board of Education, I have a few updates for you this evening as well as for our community at large. First, I want to say congratulations to our students first and foremost and our parents or guardians at home and our faculty and staff and everyone that works in the school district. And an incredible start to the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Today was our first day of school in person for all students of grades one through twelve. And half of our full-day kindergarten and preschool students were here athletically. It was incredible to see the smiling faces, the active participation in the learning that was actually going on with all the classrooms. Today's enrollment officially this morning was five thousand one hundred and seven students within our school district. And yes, we still have an extra registration process. Parents have discovered that the buses are actually moving. So we have about forty-two kids still in the queue to be registered for school. So we are actively processing them as fast as we can in hopes that those students will be able to join us next week for their first day of school. Patience by everyone is greatly appreciated during this entire first week. Triple routing was implemented and I talked about that really since last spring. Throughout the summer and the realities of transportation, there are still daily adjustments that are happening. We've sent at least one communication already to anticipate that during the first week of school, some of the buses may be late just because students are learning their bus assignments. That is actually something that we can request to families at home to continue to do. We have recently sent a text and an email message based upon the registration of the kids in the school district, grade seven through twelve, to tell them their bus number. Ironically, the majority of the kids in the school district that do not know their bus number are middle school and high school students. It would be greatly appreciated if middle school and high school students that ride a bus would actually learn their bus number. It is always parked in the same parking spot every single day in the afternoon. That would greatly speed up the efficiency of the fleet. Kids actually have to leave the high school and the buses have to depart within ten minutes based upon the schedule. So we will continue to motivate them through Mr. Kramer and Mrs. Lupo and respective staff members at the middle school and high school because when the high school, middle school, grades eight through twelve leave late, it impacts the fourth through seventh grade route and then it impacts our kindergarten through third grade route. We're about fifteen minutes behind right now every day. So we have to do something to speed up that process so that our littlest people get home on time. One of the positives of triple routing, getting a lot of positive commentary and the parent pickup and drop-off loops. There is less traffic in New Albany. I think everyone has noticed it because we're actually hearing about it pretty routinely at public events. People have seen the change in the traffic pattern. So actually that is a byproduct of triple routing. Unfortunately, we went to triple routing because of the shortage of bus drivers, which leads to my next topic and it's we are hiring. I need food service workers, aides for lunch and recess, then yes, you go outside in the snow and you have the opportunity to stay inside when it rains. But we do need some people to also be part-time aides. I'm still looking for bus drivers, although we have a sufficient number currently. Any medical leave will adversely impact our ability to transport kids in a backup fleet. So we are actively looking for food service workers, aides, and bus drivers. They can be full or part-time jobs. Most of them are part-time, but they do have benefits available to them. Lastly, substitutes. We are in the market for substitution. All job classifications across the school district, both certified on the teaching side and non-teaching side for food service workers, custodian, aides. It's very difficult to substitute bus driver unless you have a thing called a CDL. But if you have a CDL and you would be interested in something, we might be able to convince you that you want to work here full-time. So come visit us. We would be happy to have a conversation with you and the Human Resources Department. This is Lawson's area with Agnes Policki. Call HR or go on our website and all the jobs are posted. But we've had an incredible first three days of school. We had a staggered start last week on Thursday and Friday. Staggered start this week for the Early Learning Center, but all students in grades one through twelve are back and we're really excited. It's been a great start to the school year. Parents and kids are doing wonderfully. Lots of parents are happy dropping their child off in the morning. So I've seen them all three days. They're very happy that summer has come to an end and a new opportunity for them to have life because their kids are back in school. So it's been a great start to the school year. Happy to answer any questions they have. We'll continue to send out parent updates. There's another one coming this week on school safety and transportation and things that we've seen that actually will be best practice to help us keep kids safe in relationship to transportation services. So just keep reading your email. We're trying to be conscious of how much we're sending to our families and our parents, but we do appreciate everything you've done. It's been a great start this year.
Next is a plea update, Ms. Lockery.
Howdy again. Good to see you. Been a minute. Hi, I'm here to represent the Plain Local Education Association. I'm Jacqui Lockery from high school again. And these are just some highlights from August. For the middle and high school world, Sandy Reed went to Project Wild, the climate and wildlife. And this was a workshop where they did all kinds of wonderful things like looking into interdependence of species, balancing ecological, recreational, commercial uses of land and resources. All these wonderful things tying into species, ecosystems, and how climate and non-climate stressors work into that. So she's going to be able to use what she learned to develop lessons for middle and high school ecology, environmental, and biology courses. So great thing for the district there. Jeanette Milligan at the high school, one of our fabulous social studies teachers. She was a busy beaver this summer. She went to the Advanced Placement Summer Institute for AP Economics. Woo, St. Louis Federal Reserve, that's where she went. She got to learn all about that current information on the US economy, sessions on inflation, unemployment, and pulling in a lot of resources for her macro and microeconomic students to use in AP land where she spends a lot of time. She also went to a colloquium in, on teaching American history and the topic specifically was faith in freedom in colonial America and looking at the development of our American ideal of freedom of conscience, conscience during the colonial period. And she's bringing that information back to the social studies team that teaches American history. So again, great thing for our high school. Carrie Horton, our amazing music teacher for middle school and high school. She attended the Ohio Choral Directors Association Professional Development Conference at Ottervine. And there she co-conducted a concert by, performed by Capriccio Columbus. She also this summer was a professional mentor for three, count of three, music education students at Ottervine. And if you've ever been a mentor for anybody, you know that takes a lot of time and energy. So way to go, Ms. Horton. So all of this being out in the world of choral musical, choral music professional, she's bringing that back to her students and to the other staff members here in New Albany. And then last but never least in our hearts, in the primary world, Pete Barnes, Mandy McNamara, and Chris Smith went to a workshop at Olympic National Park near Seattle in July. I know we are all jealous about that one. I don't know about you. Go. But it was run by Nature Bridge and they learned about ecological restoration, outdoor education, and just got a bunch of great ideas for hands-on, you know, project-based ideas to work with environmental and ecological issues. So busy teachers out in the world, a nice little sampling there for you. Thank you very much.
All right, next on our agenda is a preliminary, our preliminary local report card results and a review of our continuous improvement plan benchmark goals, Superintendent Sawyer.
President Kalanowski, members of Board of Education, we're going to invite Mrs. Snowwack to the podium as the Director of Acceptance and Accountability. She's going to walk you through. She's going to walk you through the local report card results that are currently available from the Ohio Department of Education and the secure portal that we have access to. The public release of the local report card for 2021-22 by state statute is still scheduled for mid-September on or by September 15th. It's technically the statutory requirement. So that will be forthcoming through statute release. Katie's going to walk you through the information that we get to see behind the scenes. In addition to that, we're going to connect the dots because in September, we have one Board of Education meeting on the 19th. So tonight, we will talk about the impact to the 2021-22 Continuous Improvement Plan and the specific benchmark goals based upon the data or the specific work that's been done within the school district during last school year and at the same time forecast into the new school year, 2022-23 anticipated and proposed goals that we've created based upon the data that Katie's going to review this evening. So Katie, give me one second. I got to get your presentation up. And then remember, there's about a two- to three-second delay when I hit the button. So it's not that I'm not trying to advance the slide. You got about a two-second pause sometimes when that happens.
Okay. Well, good evening, Superintendent Sawyers, President Kalanowski, Vice President Neemoff, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share tonight about the 21-22 preliminary results of our local report card as well as our 21-22 Continuous Improvement Plan progress, and finally, proposed benchmarks for the 22-23 Continuous Improvement Plans.
Sir Boss, can you help Mr. Galloway turn the TV on behind us, please? Thank you. Sorry, Katie.
That's okay. Tonight's presentation is, of course, grounded in our purpose. We'll cover and review Ohio's local report card and some upcoming changes and updates. Our preliminary results, as Superintendent Sawyer said, what is presently available on the Secure Data Center. Official results will be released in mid-September. Our commitment to excellence, the 21-22 as well as 22-23 Continuous Improvement Plans, and as always, our response and focus to continuous improvement. As always, our work is grounded in our statement of purpose to create a culture of accountability that achieves the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student. Purpose of Ohio's local report cards. The local report card is an accountability model that highlights academic attendance, graduation, growth, and college readiness. It is intended to help districts measure the overall achievement and progress towards meeting and exceeding state standards. The academic measures rely heavily upon the results of Ohio State tests. The Ohio State tests are only administered to students in grades three through eight and in select high school courses. Although significant legislation surrounds the requirements of achievement testing, it does remain only one source of data that is used by our staff in identifying and analyzing the strengths and areas for improvement for each and every student. There are updates to Ohio's local report cards. Beginning with the 21-22 report card, many of the measures and ratings are new for traditional district and school report cards. House Bill 82 replaces the A to F letter grade system with a rating system that utilizes stars to indicate a district or school's overall performance and performance for individual components. The components are rated one to five stars. There will not be an overall rating until 22-23. So as you can see, the descriptors, the descriptors that align with the star rating system, five-star rating significantly exceeds state standards, four-stars exceed state standards, and so forth. Additional information on the new report card system compared to the previous report card, as well as an accountability crosswalk and other resources, are available on the Ohio Department of Education website. Honing our result. The local report card for the 21-22 school year is made up of five components. The achievement component provides information on the overall achievement of students on the Ohio State tests. It looks at performance index only. It no longer includes the indicators as part of that rating. I'm pleased to announce that our preliminary rating is a five-star rating for achievement. This came about because our performance index is greater than 90%. We came in at 96.3% PI percentage, and I'll go into greater detail later about how that was calculated. The next component is gap closing. It compares federally-defined subgroups against a state standard. All subgroups in ELA and MATHS met the state PI goal. We are still, however, awaiting the results of final progress data growth, which is also now a part of this component. So as you'll see for right now, it says NR for not rated. However, based on the data in there, I anticipate it will have a five-star rating pending the release of the final progress data in mid-September. The next component is progress or growth rating. Again, that's currently not rated. It is coming in September, and there is no preliminary data available to us at this time in the Secure Data Center. Graduation rate. Our preliminary results indicate five stars, and this continues to be a strong success area for our district. Early literacy, formerly known as K through three literacy. Our tentative rating is a five-star rating. This measures how successful NAPLS is getting struggling readers on track to proficiency between kindergarten and third grade. And again, I'm going to go over each of these in greater detail just to comment. So starting with achievement, what is the achievement component? As stated, this is based on the school or district's overall performance index. It no longer includes the indicators as previous report card did. The maximum PI is now established each year. You may recall that the previous maximum PI was 120. Now that is going to change each year by averaging the top PI scores for the top 2% of all districts and the top percent of all schools for each school year. The maximum PI for this year was 107.254. NAPLS earned a performance index of 103.311. So if you take the numerator and the denominator, you get the 96.3 PI percentage, which again is greater than 90 for a five-star rating. Going to start to look at each school's achievement. And as we begin to look at student achievement and growth at the end of the second full year impacted by the pandemic, there is some good news with strong signs of rebounding that reflect the tremendous efforts put forth by all of our staff and educators. A national study was conducted by NWEA MAP that indicates initial signs of academic rebounding were evident in the 21-22 school year with academic gains from fall to spring that parallel pre-pandemic trends, especially in math and amongst our youngest students. Despite initial signs of rebounding, student achievement is still not quite at the level educators would expect it to be if the pandemic did not happen. As we go through the grade-level results, the same trends held for New Albany students regarding our OST results. For the primary school, you'll note on the slide it does say in the past, we had the performance indicators that had a benchmark from ODE of 80% beginning in 2022. Report card performance indicators are no longer evaluated against that state standard of 80% proficiency, and they no longer receive a met or not met determination there for reporting purposes only. You can see at the primary school, had a strong performance in third grade math with 87.1% and third grade ELA at 90.5%. And I'm really proud to announce for the primary school that 100% of our third graders were promoted to fourth grade, which is absolutely outstanding. Intermediate school achievement. At our last board meeting, Director Emery shared the preliminary results show that NAPLS had the highest math achievement in Franklin County in grade levels three, four, and six, and second in achievement per fifth grade math. It's a reminder, we do have four sections of students that take pre-algebra A in that fifth grade, which take above-grade level content. If you would have added them back in, we also would have been highest in that grade level as well, as well as a very strong performance in English Language Arts. The percentage is there for each grade level. For middle school course achievement, there was an increase in our grade-seven math passage rate, which has been an area of focus. In fact, we've exceeded where we were pre-pandemic with students outperforming their previous score from 2017-18. So while it may not quite be where we want it yet, there's tremendous growth in this area, and our hard work is paying off at New Albany Middle School in this regard. And of course, achievement. Looking at many of courses taken, some at the middle school and mostly at the high school, there was an increase in passage rates for many areas at New Albany High School. Especially proud of the work and increase for Algebra I and Geometry, which have been areas of focus over the last school year and continued areas of increase for most of those areas. Also, a lot to celebrate in some areas for continued work as well.
Excuse me. Before we move on to a couple of slides back. First of all, it's awesome overall so far. So I want to start with that. But I did note a couple of things in middle school course achievement that seemed to be really atypical from prior years and certainly not consistent with the outstanding outcomes in some of the other grades. So do you have any idea what's going on in grade-eight math, grade-eight and grade-eight ELA and grade-eight science?
A little bit. So one thing to keep in mind, of course, is that no state testing occurred during the spring of the 1920s school year. So that's the year of the school closure. So at this time, the students would have been in sixth grade when we had the school closure. Then, of course, in seventh grades, you know, transitioning from intermediate to middle school during a challenging year where we had hybrid. For sixth grade, or excuse me, for eighth grade ELA, sixth grade would have been the first year they would have taken an assessment that has two essays. The essay expectations and the rubric change from elementary school to secondary in sixth grade would have been the first year they took that. Well, they didn't take that that year because of the school closure. And so I do think that's just something to keep in mind. They didn't have that assessment. We didn't have the data from that assessment, and it is a much more rigorous assessment compared to the elementary years. So that's something to consider. The state passage rate for eighth grade ELA was on the lower end as well. It was 53% for this school year. And I know that Principal LeBeau has actively already disaggregated this data and is working with Dr. Maimias to focus on some writing across the curriculum and informational writing, which was an area that just wasn't as high as it's been in the past. So they are all over it, I know already. For eighth grade math, something to consider as well. Of course, we're undergoing our math curriculum review as Mr. Emery and Dr. Maimias spoke about last week. So we're doing a deep dive this year into our math curriculum. What are the strengths and what are the opportunities? But we did have a change in what assessment students took previously. In the 1920s school year, we had students in pre-algebra B who previously took the grade-A math, the grade-eight math test, switched to the grade-seven test. That course does cover both seventh and eighth grade standards. Really, they could take either assessment. But that could have an impact on how our students are doing because this is an end-of-course exam. And so previously, those students would have been a part of the grade-eight math. And after the 1920s school year, they were part of grade-seven math. So that's something we're definitely digging into as we do our math curriculum review, looking at the strengths for each of our different student subgroups, opportunities for refinement, and also considering the impact of what end-of-course exam those students take for those courses that cover multiple grade levels, such as pre-algebra A and pre-algebra B, which are compacted and cover two grade levels.
It sounds like there might be some confounding variables involved here just for those two particular areas, not for other, not for similar grades and similar activities, or just...
That's our preliminary analysis. We're still disaggregating all of the data. And what we don't have right now, because the official results don't come out until September 15th, we have reached out to other districts in Franklin County, and we have their tentative results as they report them to us, as they see in the SDC. What will be very enlightening is when we get the official results on September 15th across the state that we can really dive into that deeper too and to compare, like, was there a drop across, you know, the state and how did other districts do? So we are definitely all in the data right now, but that is going to be a continued opportunity for us as well when we get our official results.
Does our own math testing support these same results?
Yeah. The challenging piece for the eighth grade ELA is that math is all multiple choice. And we get some great information on vocabulary acquisition, informational and literary, but there is no writing component to that. So that is something to keep in mind as well, that it doesn't include that component.
Be interesting to see what more we learn.
Absolutely. Definitely agree.
So just, I just wanted to try to understand. So the seventh, grade-seven ELA from 2021, 87.2. Those kids then became 76.1 in 21-22. Am I correct in that, or is that...
So the seventh, could you say that again, please?
So the 77.2% in grade-seven ELA during the 2021 school year, that cohort of students became grade-eight ELA in 21-22 for 76.1%.
Okay. So, but we have identified that that's something we're working on. I guess the, I guess the next question would be those students are now ninth graders. Is it, you mentioned that they were sixth grade when the pandemic happened. Are we seeing, I mean, obviously, they did find with grade seven, but are we seeing that specific grade, you know? Is this, is this an ongoing issue as it relates to that last school year? If you want to call it that, when kids were home and...
I definitely think it has an impact. It's obviously, again, something that Dr. Maimias and Principal LeBeau and Ken at the high school are all working on. And the good news is that CMBM assessments, which is what we utilize for Ohio State tests, does have benchmark and checkpoint assessments that can be used. I was actually at the high school last week to share some of the resources, and there's some teachers at both middle school and high school that are utilizing those, but that has a writing portion in it. So that is something that came about from the pandemic. They're called restart readiness assessments. And we've had pockets of teachers use them across the district, some in some schools more than others. But that is something we're rolling out as an assessment tool to really progress, monitor our kids, and be responsive to their needs.
I believe that.
Okay. Chronic absenteeism. Another indicator on the report card is chronic absenteeism, which measures the percent of students that miss 10% or more of school in a given year. This is, there is a strong correlation between student attendance and success in the classroom, as you know. Therefore, the state has added this indicator to hold schools accountable for helping students attend school. The chronic absenteeism improvement indicator does not count towards our rating for the 21-22 school year. It is report-only. However, moving forward, it will be a part of the gap-closing component. The district chronic absenteeism percentage was 15.3%, which is higher when you compare it to pre-pandemic years. But this number would include some of our students last year as well that were in poor portions of the year. So that's important to keep in mind. Gifted students. The gifted indicator specifically looks at all students that have been identified as gifted in one or more areas and how they performed on our state tests. The gifted indicator is broken down into three parts. The first part is the value-added or progress component. It measures whether the student demonstrates expected growth on state assessments based on past testing history. Right now, it's not calculated because we just don't have that yet. It's part of the progress measure, so that will be released around September 15th. Gifted PI is the second indicator. This is measured the same as the district or building. PI points are earned for the percentage of students scoring in a specific grade band. Students ID gifted in a subject area can also earn an additional bump in the PI calculation. For example, students that test in a grade-level course above their grade, like a sixth-grade math test for a fifth grader or a fourth grader, is allowed a bump. And for the PI calculation, students that test then above grade level are scored one performance band above. I'm happy to share that our PI was 120.306, which was 99.8%. Just missed the top 2% by a smidge, but we do have a school, which I'll talk about in a little bit. That was in the top 2% of gifted, actually New Albany Middle School. So some great work's being done in the area of students. The third area is inputs. It looks at students that are identified and whether we are serving students in their identified area. And this piece remains really strong, as met in our preliminary data. There are some updates being made to the gifted performance index calculation. As noted, there's a use of the max score calculation, so they take the top two percent of gifted PI for the state. And that's the denominator for that PI. As I mentioned, we were 99.8, so really strong. And there's also going to be updates made to gifted progress to align with the new rating system. There'll be stars instead of a letter grade moving forward. And there is also a new use of representation index, which looks at the different subgroups of identified students. So there are some changes coming to this and some of these are rolled in over a three year period. Back to our performance index, just to recap, we, our PI was 103.311 out of that max PI of 107.258. Which was determined to be the average of the top two percent of all school districts. So again, our rating was five stars because our PI percentage is 96.3%. We have to earn a score greater than 90 for that five star rating. And you can also see a breakdown then for the district of tests by proficiency level. The limited basic proficient this year accomplished, replaced, accelerated. And accelerated was confusing for some parents when they got that indication. So they've renamed it to accomplished, advanced and advanced plus. This slide shows a comparison of our PI over time. NAPLS had an increase of 6.811 points in our district PI from last school year of 96.5 to 103.311. Again, preliminary results demonstrate a trajectory of a rebound for student achievement. With increases in student scoring proficient and advanced compared to last year, but not quite yet at pre pandemic levels. Nevertheless, we are seeing that forward progress due to the continued hard work of our amazing staff and students. Gap closing, going to discuss gap closing in several different areas. As a reminder, the gap closing component shows how well we're meeting the performance expectations for certain subgroups of students. And English Language Arts, Math, English Learners and Graduation. The state calculates a PI for each subgroup and compares it to a state standard. The state's long term goal is to show that subgroups of students are increasing in overall performance. Therefore, the PI goal for individual subgroups usually increases each year. For the 2122 school year, there needed to be 15 students across the district in a specific subgroup in order to be reported. As you can see from this graph, all nine subgroups exceeded the state expectation. Yes, that is definitely a celebration. While as a district, we met our subgroup goal, there are still specific subgroups that each building has identified to target support and intervention services. So this is definitely just a huge celebration again, meeting kids where they are and exceeding with that growth. So we're really proud of this work and continue to move and deal forward. Gap closing for math, also happy to celebrate on this one. We met it in all areas, which is absolutely outstanding. So all subgroups met the state expect expected PI goal for math. And while all subgroups didn't meet the state PI goal, there's still a few that do have a lower PI than the district. So this continues to just be an area of focus for building administrators and staff. Again, we're proud of this work, a lot to celebrate, but want to continue to throw this to them. Gap closing for graduation, this one continues to remain very strong for all subgroups. We met this as well. You can see a breakdown of subgroups and the number of students in each category and exceeding the gap closing for each of those. Gap closing for our English learners. The last component of gap closing specifically measures how our English learners are acquiring the English language. Students identified as English learners annually take the OALPA, the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment. There are two parts to this component. The number of students that met English proficiency standards and exited EL services. And then of the students that did not meet proficiency, how many students increased in their overall OALPA score? The sum of these two is compared to our overall number of identified students and compared to the state standard. 103 students met proficiency or increased their overall scores. So this was 75.2% met, which far exceeded the state goal of 43.1%. And I think this is just a huge celebration. We have an increase in number of our English language learners across our district. And our staff are working really hard to be responsive to these two. So definitely a celebration. Graduation rate is a calculation of students that complete graduation requirements or four or five years. This continues to be an area of celebration with 98.8% of our students having a four year graduation rate. If, as a reminder, if a student does move out of state and we don't get a request for records, they get counted again. Now grads, so that is not enough. Early literacy, this component shows how successful NAPLS is at getting struggling readers on track to proficiency between kindergarten and third grade. And there were some changes to this component for this new report card. There are three measures that now factor into the component rating. Proficiency and third grade reading, which you can see on the slide at New Albany Primary was 89.2%. That got a weight of 60% towards the points they get for that. Promotion to fourth grade, which again, another celebration, 100%, which is not an easy task. 100% which gets weighted at 40%. And then that 40 and 53 add up to 93.5 for the five star rating. There is a third component, improving K three literacy, which you will see have an impact when we get to some of our buildings. But it's schools and districts with less than 10% of students scoring not on track in kindergarten do not have that as part of their district rating. So really for us, there are just two of the three components for our district rating of five stars. A little confusing, but the the 40 and the 53.5 gives us, give us the 93.5 and great things going on at our early grades for early literacy. The next section, this component replaces the prepared for success, which you might have recalled from past report cards. It is now entitled college career workforce and military readiness. And it will be rated for the first time in 2025. So you'll notice it says not rated. And there is a tiny bar graph. It's a little bit of data that you can see. But I will share that there are a lot of data that's not yet available in this area. And in fact, they've set the business rules and calculations are forthcoming attraction. So it's going to be phased in between now and 2025. They are expanding the list of elements that will be measured. So in the past, we have things like ACT remediation free, SAT remediation free. They've now combined that into one area, honors diploma, military enlistment, well, plus college credit plus. This is an area we'll be watching as they release the business rules and calculations for this. Obviously, we're working closely with New Albany High School to make sure our students are are set up for success. But not rated at this time until 2025.
When do you think we'll get guidance from what is all?
It said each year that they're going to release, so you can see what a few of the data points will be. So like there's a handful in there now and then we'll get more in 23 and then more in 24. That's something we'll be paying very close attention to as those are released so that we can obviously be prepared to be responsive to that. Forward progress into 2223, we've talked about a little bit of this, but some highlights. Our student achievement remained very high. All of our subgroups met or exceeded the state PI goal. Writing scores have continued to increase across the district. And so some of our focus areas identified to date, there is a continued focus on writing and on grade levels and certain grade levels. You do have, whether it's opinion writing or argumentative or informational, while we've seen a steady increase. There are a few areas that that is an opportunity for us. So we are continuing to focus on that in the area that is an opportunity. Increased levels of intervention support and reading for our on grade level students in particular. As well as increased levels of interventions for math, again, for our on grade level students in particular. At the elementary level, we have been very responsive to the new dyslexia law with professional development occurring this year and training of staff. Or tiered intervention support. At the middle school and high school, additional staff have been added for intervention services. We have realigned the secondary math coach to support on grade level content such as in Algebra I and Geometry. The high school has revamped the academic lab for additional support for on grade level students. And as mentioned before, we are going to be in the midst of a deep dive into our math curriculum to identify strengths, areas for improvement as part of our five year career. Now I'm going to highlight in the SDC what our local report cards look like. What is the star rating for each of the areas for each school? So New Albany Primary School, I'm proud to announce that for achievement, the preliminary rating is five stars. The PI at New Albany Primary School is 106.385 for a PI percentage of 97.5%. You'll notice that gifted right now is not rated and we're waiting on the progress component of that. However, the PI is available in there. It's 119.441 or 98.6 PI percentage, which is just outstanding.
Wow.
Yes, gap closing, five stars, and nine out of nine subgroups in ELA and math. Early literacy is four stars. And so I'll explain that because you'll notice on the district we've got five stars. And we're just so close from hitting it in this area. And as I mentioned earlier, there are three components for early literacy, proficiency and third grade reading. Promotion to fourth grade, we did excellent on both of those. And then improving K three literacy, that component was not a part of the district rating due to the number, low number of off track students in kindergarten. However, it does get factored into this rating. And so what this looks at is the number of off track students and K through three, and then how many we get back on track. So we had 157 students move to on track out of 240 that are originally identified off track, which comes out as 65.4%. That is weighted as 25 percentage points of the overall component. And so when you take the third grade ELA proficiency and you take the promotion score and then that component of 16.4 points, you end up at 87%. 88% is the benchmark for five stars in this rating. So we are very, very close. And I know this is in the area we'll focus on and still a lot to be proud of at New Albany Primary School with 100% of our third graders going on to fourth grade. New Albany Intermediate School, proud to announce an achievement rating of five stars. PI was 105.680 at 96.8% for a PI percentage. Again, gifted not rated at this time, however, our PI for gifted was 120.954 or 99.9% PI percentage outstanding. And then gap closing, five stars and nine out of nine subgroups in ELA and math based on preliminary data. Look at our local report cards for our secondary. Middle School pleased to announce that New Albany Middle School had an achievement rating of five stars. PI at 101.791 or 93.3%. Gifted, this is a true celebration for New Albany Middle School. It is 121.941. And you notice it's over 100%, 100.7% for PI, which means they are in the top 2%. They are part of the average for the denominator for the gifted PI population. So that is outstanding. And then gap closing, five stars as well at New Albany Middle School. New Albany High School, again, pleased to announce and celebrate an achievement rating of five stars with a PI of 100.954, 92.5 PI percentage. The gifted PI for New Albany High School, 117.017 or 96.6% also high. Gap closing, five stars, eight out of eight subgroups in ELA and nine out of nine in math. There just weren't quite enough EL students in the ELA courses. That's why that one is eight out of eight. But outstanding work at New Albany High School. Graduation rate, five stars continues to be a strong indicator. And again, that last one is not rated until 2025 since they're overhauling it. So with all of that in mind, we're going to transition and talk about our continuous improvement plan benchmarks. As a reminder of our commitment to excellence, New Albany Plain Local School District is committed to creating a culture of accountability that achieves the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student. The district aspires by September of 2023 to be ranked in the top 10 or higher of all public school districts for student achievement in the state of Ohio as reported by ODE Performance Index ranking. As our long term commitment, we aspire to become and remain the best rated school district in the state of Ohio. So kind of as a reminder, as we move into these CIP discussions that the report card has changed. A reminder, we have the new star rating system. So we have five stars significantly exceed state standards, four stars exceeds and so on and so forth. But just some things to keep in mind as we start talking about some of our benchmarks.
Before we move into the CIP, can we just take a minute to celebrate?
That would be yes.
You know, that would be an amazing report card any year. And the fact that we're coming off of a couple of years of school being remote and challenging for kids. To see that we are so strong and back on track and and, you know, all of the commitment from staff to really identify where the gaps quickly and try to close gaps. I remember, you know, we set up summer programs and we identified kids that needed help. And and, you know, this is part of why all the assessments are so important. Because we can really pinpoint how to help students, but tremendous accomplishment. As I said, any, any year, this would be a great report card, but especially coming off of a couple of really challenging years. So thank you so much, everyone, for the tremendous work. And just, I know it's going to continue to look excellent. So it's an incredible achievement. Thank you.
All right, jumping in then and looking at our CIP from last year, our benchmark one was to increase achievement. Our goal was to increase the district performance index rank as compared to all Ohio school districts on the local report card from 17 to 16. Or that the district performance index score would be 90% or greater. The district performance index score is 96.3. And so I'm happy and pleased to announce that this benchmark is met. And goal one for academic achievement is tied to our performance stipend enacted by our Board of Education. And so I'm pleased to share and celebrate with our staff and teachers that worked so hard for this to have earned their academic achievement stipend for the 2122 school year. Um, 2223 proposed to increase achievement. Our goal is to earn a district performance index score of 95% or greater. Couple of things to recall, under House Bill 82, achievement is now determined with the performance index score percentage. There are no official rankings under the new report card. OD has not published any rankings to the best of our knowledge. And there is no overall star rating for the 2122 report card. That's a coming attraction for the future. Increasing from a 90% to 95% is raising our expectation to hit the benchmark of five stars with our previous goal being the benchmark of four stars. That PI denominator for the top two percent is still unknown from year to year as well. So something to keep in mind in regards to that proposed benchmark. Benchmark two, facilitate a year or more growth for every year of instruction. That is the progress component we are still waiting on that will not become available to us until September 15th. So that is still to be determined. At this time, not having any of our data to review, our benchmark of course is to facilitate that year or more of growth for every year of instruction. And at least earn four stars or greater on the local report card. But again, we don't have that data to review at this time. So that's something we can continue to reflect on as we receive data. Benchmark three is to meter exceed the state gap closing standards for identified subgroups. This is technically not rated as a district. You'll recall that from earlier in the presentation. Our school building data looks really strong in this area, most of this being five stars. However, we do not have the progress component of that. We get points for both math and reading ELA in both of those areas. So technically, that is to be determined in mid September as well. We don't have the final rating on that because those will impact scores at building and district potentially. Benchmark three proposed also deals with staff, the state gap closing standards. At this time, it's to earn a gap closing rating of four stars or greater on the local report card. Again, still waiting kind of our final review. Benchmark four, graduate students who are college and career ready. We have three components to this to earn a graduation component of four stars. That's met, we exceeded that with five stars. The next area is that students in the class of 22 taking the SAT will earn a mean score that is at least 20% higher than the state average. As reported by the SAT cohort, the annual report, that is to be determined. We have not received that yet. That is usually released the last week in August. So hopefully that'll be a coming attraction for next week. Excited to get those results. And then the last one is to administer the PSAT to all eighth graders and the SAT to all juniors. And that is also met. Proposed benchmark four, along the same area to graduate students who are college and career ready. Want to continue to have that high rating of earning a graduation component rating of four stars or greater. We want to continue to have students score at least 20. We want to continue to have students score at least 20% or higher on the SAT cohort annual report, and obviously want to continue to administer the PSAT to all eighth graders and SAT to all juniors this school year. Benchmark five has to do with enhancing school culture and social emotional wellbeing. That was to administer age-appropriate student surveys to measure the percentage of students who feel safe at school and supported, have at least one staff member to approach with problems, and the effectiveness of specific programs offered in grade levels. That is met. We did a couple of surveys this year, some of the belonging survey and social emotional surveys in the past as part of our BIC framework. We have goals around this as well. Second benchmark is to implement age-appropriate student programs, including the R factor and building inclusive campus culture initiatives with building and district committees, continuation of diversity, equity, inclusion work, staff professional development partnerships with external experts to enhance district climate, culture, and wellbeing. That's also met for this school year. So looking forward, our proposed benchmark in the same area of supporting school culture and social emotional wellbeing is to administer age-appropriate student surveys to measure the percentage of students who feel safe at school, supported, and have at least one staff member that they can approach with problems, and the effectiveness of specific wellbeing programs offered in different grade levels across the district. Benchmark six is demonstrating sustainable fiscal management. If possible, due to the general revenue fund expenditures required to fulfill the COVID-19 health and safety protocols, we were going to reduce the fiscal year 22, five-year forecast line, item 4.500, by at least $692,000 resulting in a 1% or greater reduction in total expenditures, and that is met. The 22, 23 proposed benchmark is to also reduce fiscal year 23, five-year forecast line 4.500 total expenditures by at least $709,817 resulting in a 1% or greater reduction. Ms. Jenkins, is there anything you'd like to add?
We did discuss this at the last board meeting. Our fiscal year ended line 4.5, about $4.9 million under projections. And we transferred 1.9 of that to permanent improvement for an overall reduction of just over $3 million. And as we discussed last month, about 2.8 million of that was in personnel and benefits. And we know that we are not able to hire all of the positions that we had planned on hiring. We also were able to replace those that left, could replace someone at a lower cost. So that was the driver of the 2.8 million dollars. So we did meet that goal. The 708 or $709,000 for the next year is based on the May forecast. So as we update the five-year forecast in October, that could change, but it won't change.
Benchmark seven was to ensure community engagement and stakeholder satisfaction. We had administer parent and staff surveys to measure the level of satisfaction with educational quality, school culture, communication, student services, climate, or fiscal management. That has met. For example, we complete annually a staff climate survey and incorporate staff feedback and plans for the following year. The second area was to implement at least three strategies during the 21, 22 school year to increase district awareness and engagement of senior citizens, adults without children enrolled, and plain township residents. This has also met. Some examples of this work include actively recruiting senior citizens to work in our school, actively intending and engaging with the Rotary Chamber, New Albany Community Foundation, city events and meetings, as well as board liaison with the Plain Township trustees and Parks and Recreation Department. Proposed for the 22, 23 school year, ensuring community engagement and staff satisfaction, to administer parent and staff surveys to measure the level of satisfaction with educational quality, school culture, communication, student services, climate, or fiscal management. We've begun to have some conversations about a parent survey perhaps later this fall, perhaps incorporating questions from the National Gallup poll on public education. We're just starting conversations about what that will look like, so that's still to be determined, as well as give our annual staff climate surveys with feedback from our staff and teachers. As always, our focus is on continuous improvement, that all employees will be accountable for implementing research-based practices, including a rigorous and aligned curriculum, common assessments, focused instruction, data-driven decisions to achieve the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student within a fiscally sustainable budget. Of course, owning our R, these are our responses. Continued clarity of purpose, deliberate and defined actions based upon our values. Implement a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Teach rigorous and standards-aligned curriculum deeply. Develop, use, and analyze common assessment data. Evaluate student intervention and enrichment opportunities. Monitor progress regularly for those corrective actions. Ongoing classroom walkthroughs with feedback. Analyze data to make those data-driven decisions. Implement and integrate the R factor and BIC framework, and high expectations for our continuous improvement. So what are our next steps? Board of Education will reflect upon the proposed 22, 23 continuous improvement plan benchmarks with follow-up discussion, refinement, and adoption of the 22, 23 continuous improvement plan at our September 19, 2022 board meeting. Opportunity to kind of reflect and see if it's part of meeting data. And with that, just a reminder that our official results will be released in mid-September by the Ohio Department of Education. Hope the presentation was informative for our board as well as our parents watching at home. Are there any additional questions at this time?
So do you think we'll have the additional results by that next board meeting? Yeah, okay.
We hope so. So you'll have whopping four days. Few things. Oh, you will, of course, second President Kalanowski's comments about it's really nice to see us back on track and achieving what we're here to achieve. You know, at the end of the day, we are a public school. Our primary role is to, in my view, to impart foundational knowledge in primary and secondary grades. We've got millennia of human history to teach young people. We've learned a lot over the millennia, wrote some of it down, and we have to pass that on. So that's our, that's our primary role, in my view. When, when I look at the, our response continued clarity of purpose, you know, we, we say it every meeting multiple times, starting six years ago. And Mr. Emery mentioned it at his presentation at the last meeting that, you know, when that happened, the, the ability of staff to focus on this core mission has really produced results. So it's great to see. You know, every, every moment we spend here at school doing things that aren't part of our core purpose fundamentally takes away from our core purpose. You know, there's, there's so much to cover. In early grades, you all know, right? Reading, arithmetic, writing, music, art, right? And as you go through the grades, you add history and science and, and you know, all those things that are, that are so very important. So it's just great to see that we're, that we really are focused on that goal, and that's what I want to make sure that we continue to do. One quick question outside the general is about the PSAT, PSAT test. We talked about this a couple of years ago about how we use that. Do you have any insights into what we have done differently over the years? My, what I learned, you know, a couple of years ago when we were first focusing on this was that that can be such a terrific predictor, and if we know, you know, what kids are doing and help them prepare for that test, we can help with our national merit scholars, right? National merit finalists, that's, that's important there. And then also predictors for the SAT. Can you give any insight into what we're doing there that's, that is different to really use that result to help kids?
I may call on some of my high school friends, giving the PSAT for me transitioning to this role in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. It just kind of suffered more. But I, Mr. Kramer or Dr. Mias, would you want to elaborate on that a little bit more than perhaps I could have been?
I'll speak to it. So the reason why we made the switch to SAT is for alignment. Each year, yes, students get specific score reports. You can look at breakdown of standards, and you can understand strengths and weaknesses. But there's also alignment from eighth grade all the way up to 11th grade. There's predictive scores for targeted areas for each year where a kid should land and show the growth. And there's also tied with college board placement. So it gives predictors on good AP courses for that student page, courses that a student would be successful in. And that's how a lot of kids get started because it'll indicate the specific AP courses they should.
On the PSA.
Yeah.
So we are using it, we're using individual student results with that individual student to help guide their, their future, their continued development.
And we use it, use the result with teachers as well. So let's use that way, and, and all that data is available.
And then another generalized, general comment, you know, we talk about the benchmarks. We talk about the continuous improvement plan. We talk about the fact that everyone in the district earned the stipend. This was one of, in my view, again, one of the great achievements of this, of this district. Six years ago, when we implemented that, we're the only district that has every single employee in the district from all the teachers, all the administrators, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, even the Board of Education, every single employee of this district is on the hook for achieving academic results. And I think it says something about what we value that we're willing to put, that each one of us is willing to put money at risk to make sure that we achieve what we set out to achieve for kids. So it's important for people to, to know that because, again, no other district in the state does that.
Don't want to lose the opportunity to echo Mr. Kalanowski and Mr. Deros. Thanks to our leadership team, and most of which are here tonight, our staff and our teachers for the great results and all the hard work over the last couple of years with what we've been through with the pandemic and to be seeing the academic results rebounding. Just thank you for all you've done and continue to do. I know we're going to continue to ponder the, the continuous improvement plan, and it's great to see specific things laid out already. But again, just another word of thanks and really appreciate everyone's efforts. It's been a challenging couple of years, but great to see us coming out on top.
Well, since Mr. Bush isn't here. I'm gonna take his line to say you've all said it all. So, but anyhow, he said something. He does, but it's okay. No, it's, it's great to see. I'm looking forward to seeing the results, which I, that we all expect to be good. And I love, you know, we'll just keep on, keep on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gay. Good first report, Gay. A month on the job, look at that.
All right. Next on our agenda is discussion items, beginning with board liaison reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Okay. Then we will move on to our second reading of board policy. Superintendent Sawyers.
President Kalanowski, members of Board of Education. Tonight's agenda, you have 11 policies that I talked at length about at the last Board of Education meeting. Relationships proposed changes based upon the work throughout the summer, commonly within curriculum assessment and instruction, and then the work of the board in relationship to strengthening board policy to talk specifically about the role of the parent or the guardian in the educational process. I'm going to focus on one, and then I want to make a comment in relationship to per point of clarification. So the only policy that I've received feedback on prior to tonight's public participation is the policy that Mrs. Lockery actually spoke about during public participation in reference to political activities of staff, and specifically the word encourage. And then how does that then, in conversations with staff members, commonly within the social studies department or members of the leadership team building principles or assistant principles, impact the ability for citizenship in the social studies standards? So Dr. Mias, Mr. Emery pulled all the social studies standards across the learning requirements from the state to specifically look at that to try to help us understand how do we achieve that with current interpretation? So it's really the point of clarification that Mrs. Lockery was speaking about to understand the differentiation of encouraging political activity versus the citizenship requirement that's actually in state standards because it is actually part of state standards to try to help kids understand that. Dr. Mias, Mr. Emery can speak further to that. That is the one board agenda or board policy that's actually been a topic of conversation since our last meeting. Aside from that, one other comment is for point of clarification, just to make sure it's completely understood in the room. Policy 2416 is not part of the 11 policies that are part of tonight's agenda as part of the second reading. 2416 has yet to come forward for update. You did hear tonight, it was first introduced in 1997. There was an update in 2004 that was revised and re-adopted by the board at that time. There was another update with revision adopted in 2007. It's currently in the queue of the workflow, but it is not presented this evening as one of the policies the board is actually adopting. So there's no second reading or recommendation for any modification to the existing policy that's currently in the school district for 2416. It is not one of those that I'm actually bringing forth to the board. Aside from that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board has. I did not receive any other interim questions at the last meeting relative to the policies or the specific language short of the political activities of staff and the word encourage.
So can I ask a point of clarification on that? So the policy says the board adopts the following guidelines for those professional staff members who intend to engage in political activities. So it would seem to me that letter F references the intention of political professional staff members can gain intention to engage in political activities. So therefore encouraging or soliciting students to engage in political activities or causes. To me, is the intention of the, it's not, it's not the encouragement of being specifically engaged, correct? It is encouraging them to engage in specific political activities that the teacher wants them to engage in. So as long as everybody understands that.
I would think that we're okay. I was going to ask for the qualifier to be understood. So I was waiting because I didn't know where your comments were going to be. But we've had that conversation with that leadership, and I think it resolves the issue that Mrs. Lockery was bringing forth, that it's publicly stated that that is the intent, because that was the intent of the conversation during the prep work that was specifically done on it.
That is great.
So before we get into the next agenda item, I, I have received a few questions about policy 2416. So I'm just going to take a moment and go off agenda a little bit to give some clarifying comments. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about the direction related to the memo we sent out and 2416. Some of the comments made here this evening were similar to a few of the questions I got. So I just want to provide some clarity. So we are not telling teachers that they must contact parents to notify parents that a student has requested to be identified by a different pronoun. If a student requests that a teacher identify them by a new pronoun that is different than one that's been established for the student, the, the parent will ask the student if they have parental consent, and you can help me with this.
The teacher, not your parent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the teacher will ask.
Administrator.
Or an administrator.
Or school counselor.
Will ask the parent, will ask the student if they have parental consent. And if the student does not have parental consent, there's a conversation with the student. Do you feel comfortable getting parental consent? If the student doesn't feel comfortable, we will provide every support possible to help the student with that conversation and to feel comfortable. At the end of the day, if the student is not comfortable, it is not the role of the teacher to out the student. There, there would be no contact made by the teacher to notify a parent that the student has requested for this change. And we would continue, overall, what I want to say is we are very committed to providing a safe. we are very committed to providing a safe, supportive environment for all of our students. We want, we want all of our students to feel like it's an inclusive environment. We are as committed as we've always been to providing that environment to our students. What you see in these policies is we're also committed to a strong partnership with parents. And so with that, where we don't want to be and what we don't think is best for our students, our parents, or our staff is where the school is engaging and keeping a deliberate secret from parents. We want to support students in every way possible, but we don't want our staff to be in a position where they are actually being asked to deliberately keep something from parents and everyone is in on it in the school except the parent. I don't think that's a good place for students to be. I don't think it's a good position for staff to be in. And I think that it's not in the best interest of our relationship with our parents to operate that way. So I know I'm, I'm kind of going off topic, but I did want to provide some clarity around some of the comments because I had received some questions before the meeting and I'm hearing some misunderstanding in the room. Superintendent Sawyer, I don't know, do you want to add to that?
No, I think it goes back to normally, and I was part of the authorship in relationship to the memo that went out based upon the conversations with the Board of Education. So for our students at the high school and our middle school, that dominantly this may impact. We are absolutely committed to the safety and really wellbeing of all of our students on our school campus. There is differences of opinion in relationship to what is the role of the school district and what's currently happening from a litigation perspective. And there was a reference earlier by one of our high school students who did her due diligence and looking at specific things. That there was a court ruling in July that specifically became a topic of conversation in the education community in relationship to protecting really staff members from potential liability. And we're not going to go into all the intricacies of what that's all about. But at the end of the day, we're committed to where Mrs. Kalanowski went. And I think Mr. Kramer and the high school faculty and staff have tried to echo that to the kids. Specifically, I'm addressed high school because you're here. We absolutely want you to come to school every single day and feel that you're safe, supported, and you're connected. We absolutely believe you have every right as every other student on our school campus to endure that and have that privilege every single day. Is there work still to probably be done? Yes. But the number one question I've gotten in the last two weeks, week and a half since August 12th, today's 22nd, so 10 days, goes back to the point that Mrs. Kalanowski was specifically made about outing kids. There will be no faculty or staff member in this school district that will out any student without his or her knowledge or permission to any parent. That is not going to happen. It hasn't happened to the best of my knowledge in the six years that I've been superintendent of the school district. It's not going to happen. That's not what should be happening in our school district. We have not directed students. This is directed towards staff members because of currently what's going on, right or wrong, and the legal system of what we have to do to try to ensure that staff members are also safe, secured, and protected from the realities of what happens legally, right or wrong, depending on what interpretation you may have with what's going on in society. But that's just the reality of it. No direction's been given to kids back to, on the specific example that was provided about how you address each other at school. We're not interfering with that. You have those individual rights as students within our school district. There was specific mention during the public participation about the ACLU document. We are not in violation of the ACLU document. We've read it cover to cover. We've read it point to point. We've debated the points in it with board counsel. So we've done our due diligence. We're trying to create an environment, not just where students feel safe, secure, valued, and protected, but at the same time, faculty and staff are as well. While this goes through, whatever the headache is called the legislative system. Our focus is kids and we're trying to figure out how to do that every single day with you to the best of our human ability. We believe in everything that you are, who you are, and you have every right to be that person. You're valued in our community, you're valued within our school district. You need to know that. You truly need to know that. Can we do better? Obviously, yes, because you're here tonight and I applaud you for having voice. And your willingness to courage to come to the podium is not an easy thing to do to get up there as a 16, 17, or 18-year-old person. There are adults that can't do it. To stand there and basically testify on your own behalf to say, this is who I am. I matter, I believe, and this is what I care to tell you. So congratulations to all of you for doing that because it's very important. There is no ill intent. I honestly don't believe that. There isn't any ill intent for what was coming out in reference to what's being referred to as policy 2416. And I don't know what the workflow outcome is going to be. That's right now sitting with attorneys and they'll go back through the wordsmithing. Obviously, you can tell it's part of federal legislation when it goes back to U.S. Code 20. It hasn't changed most likely. I didn't go research it, Ms. Rooney, to the extent you have. I've read the entire document. I didn't go back to look to see what happened in 1997 versus 2004. I couldn't tell you sitting here, I don't know. That's why we have an attorney. I'm not an attorney, I'm an educator. So I interpret it and we basically go through the process with the board. But you matter every single day in this school district. You need to know that. And we'll continue to work with every student in our school district to make sure that he or she or whatever, at the end of the day, the student, they, them, referred to be called, depending on where this goes on the adult side. And I'm sorry, you're in the middle of this thing called this legislation and litigation. But I have to do something to notify staff based upon the information that I receive from board counsel and the Board of Education. That's part of our responsibility because I have an ethical responsibility to protect staff members, just like as I have an ethical responsibility to support you. That's my job and it's my job with 658 other wonderful people called adults that come to this place to be with 5,107 of you every day. Every student in our school district is special. We're proud of everything that you do every single day. Are we perfect? No. And you're going to discover that as you get older and you enter this thing called adulthood. When you magically turn 18, none of us are perfect. We make mistakes. But there was no ill intent on anything that we've communicated. And I hope you genuinely, truly understand and believe that that really is the case.
And I heard that from all of you and I really appreciate you giving us that grace. I, I do want to reassure you and echo what Superintendent Sawyer was saying that we are as committed as ever to creating an environment that is inclusive for every student, that is free of harassment, discrimination, bullying. You know, this, this is not an indication that you don't have support. We completely support you. We just can't be in the position where we're asking our staff to deliberately keep something from parents. So I hope that clarifies. There won't be, again, staff contacting your parents if you're not comfortable having the conversation. We will provide support in every way possible if you can't have that conversation. But this is, this is where the board is landing today. And we just want you to understand that it, it doesn't mean you're not supported. We want you to feel loved and cared for and like you belong. And, and for every student to feel that in our school district. So please know that is our commitment and I will turn it to the board for any further comment.
I don't know. Again, I'm going to take Mr. Bush's thing. You guys said it all. I mean, Juber, the last time you were here, you know, you spoke as eloquently as you did tonight. And we talked about the fact that no one should be treated unfairly, right? So I hope you remember that. I'm just going to point back to the values. An environment of kindness, dignity, and respect. That's what we're trying to do here. And I know that if you may not always feel that we're doing it the way you want to, you know, sorry about that, but that, that is what we're trying to do. And, you know, we value each one of you and we really appreciate you being here. It's, as Mr. Sawyer said, I know it's not easy to stand up there. But you all did it, you all did it well. And I know you may not always agree with everything that that we do here, but we do respect you. And we do care for you very much. And so I, I hope you, I hope you guys understand that and, and know that. Even when it's not something that you feel that we as the adults are doing the way you want it.
I care about you. I mean, that's all I can say. You just never want to do. We, we are trying to do the best that we can to give you that safe environment where you feel that we can have this environment. I mean, it is just really hard to acknowledge. I mean, as a parent, as well as a board member, I mean, it hurts me that, that you all are feeling this way. And we want to, as you've heard from all of us, do what we can, but in the, in the broader picture of what we're trying to deal with, with the way the world is right now. So again, we're here in New Orleans, we can protect each other. We're trying to live our values and know that this is, this is our attempt to be congruent with those values. But we know what happens every day in the, in the district and we're helping you our best. So again, I encourage you, if anybody wants to talk one-on-one, reach out. I'm happy to have coffee, get together, talk. How do we, how do we improve this thing? But this is, this is challenging times. Thank you for, again, thank you all for being here. It is difficult. I was flashing back to ninth and 12th grade. I wasn't.
I, I echoed the, the comments of my fellow board members and Superintendent Sawyers. I, I feel exactly the same way. You know, it does take a lot of courage to stand up here and talk. And, and I remember Juber when you were here. And I remember when Lee was here. And I remember the conversations, remember what each of you said. And we've actually talked about it as we've talked through these issues. We remember that you came up and spoke to us. And we thought about it and it matters. One day, you, many of you will be parents also. And you're going to want to, to make sure that, that the school is, is a partner with you as well. And so the parents are part of this conversation. They are an important part of the conversation. You know, I'm a parent, my daughter, I'm, I'm sure there were things that she kept from me and, and my wife. That's what kids do. I remember when she was first in, in kindergarten and, and drew a picture that, that, you know, was, was a bit surprising about, about a party that, that we all attended, you know, with her, with her uncle. And the teacher said, it's okay. We won't believe half of what your kid says happened at home if you don't believe half of what your kid says happened at school. Right? So we know that those sorts of, of interactions take place. We want teachers and parents to all be comfortable that we all have students' best interests at heart. At the same time, we are not actively keeping secrets. That's why it matters that we do have these, these, these breaks that we have, that we have clear lines that we should not cross. It's just not the school's job to, to make that next step. So that's, that ultimately, that's where we are with, with the policy. And we think that it respects the rights of our students, of our faculty, of our staff, and of, of our parents.
So again, you know, we can be reached individually. We would love to actually have, you know, individual conversations. We can speak a lot more and in depth with you if, if you want to reach out to us directly. But thank you all for being here tonight and for having the courage to be at the podium. And you matter. You matter a lot to us. Okay, so next on our agenda are treasurer's items. May I have a motion and a second for treasurer's items, A and B, please? Mr. Newmoff and Mr. Darrow, Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you. I have two items, a monthly financials. It's for July. We are one month into the fiscal year, so not a lot to say here. We're on plan. And then appropriation modifications. You can see those increases listed and the reason for that. They all have an associated revenue that goes with them. I'm happy to answer any questions.
None, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to approve superintendent's items, A through D, please?
Second.
Mr. Darrow and Mr. Newmoff, Superintendent Sawyer.
President Kalanowski, members of Board of Education. Letter A is personnel standard employee action items for the continuation of the hiring or contractual terms and conditions afforded to employees within the school district. Letter B, general business. I'm going to call your attention to one item. We are welcoming three currently foreign exchange students to New Albany High School. As sophomores or juniors, we have one student from France, one student from Finland, and one student from Spain that have enrolled at New Albany High School that are currently living with the host family within our school district. We welcome them to the high school and wish them an incredible school year with our students. Letter C, as always, we're very grateful, their generosity, philanthropic efforts of our community. Tonight on the agenda, we accept donations that have been received to the school district in honor of and the memory of William Rash, who was an environmental employee within the school district, retired teacher from Westerville, employed by the school district to work in the wetlands and other things specifically to support environmental education within our school district, who passed away in the summer and we received donations in his memory. And lastly, letter D are the 11 policies that were previously presented and discussed again this evening that were up for second reading for formal adoption, for board policy revision. I'd be answering any questions you may have.
Any questions? I just want to comment real quick. I remember the last time I saw Mr. Rash was at the, it was at a community event. But he came, I mean, he was always here. He was at, you know, school events, sporting events, well after he, he left. And so I also, I also remember some, you know, early on when I was on the board, you know, he didn't always necessarily agree with everything that we were doing here either. So sometimes he was a little tough, but especially related to environmental issues on the school district. But I just want to acknowledge that, you know, he, he was a big presence around here for a long time. And, but we missed and I appreciate all of these donations.
Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Darrow?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to adjournment for this evening. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Mr. Darrow and Mr. McClellan, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion carries. Our next meeting is on September 19th at this location at 16. Thank you.